All right, great. Thanks, everyone. Let's get the party started. This is our monthly workshop meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township. And Commissioner Morris couldn't be live with us, but he is streaming online. So he'll be here with us in spirit. I think we got everybody else here. Craig, how many people do we have on Zoom? Ten, okay. Thank you. The way this typically works, our workshop meeting is a little more informal. We work through a lot of issues. Generally, the longer the two meetings, then our Wednesday business meeting is where we take official action on items, but a lot of times there's less discussion on items that have already been worked through. So we typically start with matters that involve our engineer. So we're going to do that first, and then he can be dismissed, go on his merry way when we're done with that. We have a couple other pretty short items to do. And then I know probably the longest item we'll get into is discussion about the Springfield Little League. So we'll do that. And we do have a hard stop, say at 8:55 to clear the room. We have previously scheduled interviews for police candidates, so we have to do that at nine o'clock. People can stay for the rest of the agenda or more comment afterwards. That'll probably take about an hour, so we'll restart again at 10 o'clock. And of course, people are always welcome to come to our Wednesday meeting as well. So we will then start with Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ladies and gentlemen, come on, great. Just by way of update, a couple of things for kind of community edification. Over at Cisco Park, our playground construction is going well. We have completed most of the site work. Curbing is in, equipment is going up. We expect to finish that project in about three weeks, hopefully in time for the Fourth of July holidays. That one's going well. That's a good one. On your agenda for consideration on Wednesday night is the approval of the Springfield Middle School Expansion Project. We've been over that with the planning commission, over that with the engineers. I think Andy has prepared a draft resolution. One of the things that was important to us was a meeting with the school's engineer and visualizing the buffer between the existing school and the residents at the rear Bergen Road. School district has agreed to install some additional buffering in areas where that existing landscaping is sparse. And we've also talked about the installation of street trees along Church Road, all which I think are in keeping with the intent and the direction we got from the planning commission and answering some of the questions I had in my review letters. So barring any questions, I think that one is in fairly good shape for your consideration.
That's one of the approval resolutions that's in your packet tonight.
Yep.
Great. And on a similar note, in your packet for consideration on Wednesday night is the WB Homes application for the Halls Lane project. Recall, that has been through a number of conversations with our planning commission, our shade tree commission, and focusing most of our attention on stormwater there. That was certainly a big topic of conversation. The board, when we discussed this project, put certain additional onus on the developer to meet aggressive, more than minimum requirements for stormwater controls. They are now components of our plan. We spent a fair amount of time on landscaping, preservation of as many trees as possible, understanding trees that may be in jeopardy. The applicant has agreed to work with a local urban forester and arborist to take a look at some of that plant material as we go. Mike and I visited the property with Mr. Canavan. Looking at the parking spaces we are building within our open space park and our trail network that is coming in conjunction with this project, we don't see anything immediately apparent where we could shift a parking space or two and save any significant vegetation. But we're going to hold final judgment on that one until that parking area gets staked out in the field. We will certainly very carefully check the limits of clearing as that project comes to fruition. The other one we've talked about was a three-way stop sign possibility at Green Hill Road and Hawes. There is a traffic report that is part of the file that suggests that that three-way stop sign, once the park connection is available, four-way stop sign, I'm thinking the driveway is a four-way intersection. Yes, that can be installed with warrants. So that is part of the resolution that Andy has prepared for your consideration. So again, I think that's another one that's in fairly good shape for consideration on Wednesday night. Just one other one that Mike and I were talking about was the trail conversation that links Carrollton and East Mill and that project along the channel that stream. I did a memo a couple of weeks back, spoke again with our environmental consultant, our wetlands consultant, about the difficulties that project may indeed face from a permitting perspective and from a construction perspective, and how expensive that potentially could be. So Mike and I just wanted to make sure before we did anything further, whether there's any further thoughts from the board about the value of that project or whether we should proceed or to what extent we should proceed. So that's a topic for consideration for you guys as well.
And Mike, is that one that would require a formal vote or just a...
We want like some direction and understanding from the board that, you know, the costs are going to probably be in that $25,000 to $35,000 number for permitting, plan, design, specification, before we proceeded at a staff level to go forward with it. But it doesn't have to be a formal vote, but in a public meeting, like to hear from the board that, yeah, we want to go forward with it, if that's the case.
I guess I would have reservation of $35,000 to $40,000 on this amount of trail without putting it in the context of other trails, just for clarification about model of spelling. It's my residence, you see that for me. And not to mention that we're talking about potentially a lot more, right? That that's just the stormwater, that's sort of the wetlands aspect of it, and then additional on top.
Well, the construction would be on top of that, Suzy, but I, you know, I think that's kind of the range we're thinking. We believe it will be a joint permit application to both the Army Corps of Engineers and the PADEP. The DEP certainly does not like paved trails in their floodplain. And they would, we'd have to provide good evidence as to why it was important and what's the justification for putting paving in the floodplain. So there's a couple of things, a couple hurdles we'd have to cross through that permitting and consideration process. And then, you know, certainly the design, the bid specs and all that would come along with it is the reason why that number seems so high.
And Tim, when you say paving, you mean the town?
Yeah, the trail, right, exactly. If it were wood chips, it would be, you know, a lot less burdensome for us to build. But I think if this trail is to be effective, it really requires some kind of hard surface and being able to connect along Mill Road as well to the intersection and that stop sign and the pedestrian crossing.
And build to basically county standards.
Yeah, I guess, you know, we're talking about the trail, Pete, you know, what is the, I guess, perspective or, you know, how much use is it going to get? Sidewalk is typically five foot wide today. If it's more like a sidewalk, it's all we'd be thinking about it. Fact is a five-foot wide trail. I don't think it needs to be something like Valley Green to be 14, 20 feet wide, something like that, no.
And any of the concerns that you raised regarding DEP, are they insurmountable?
Not insurmountable, Jonathan, no, just process.
Process, kind of checking boxes.
Okay.
And the studies that go along with it, didn't study, you know, what affects on what?
How much of a stretch of trail is there?
What is probably 500 feet-ish range, I guess, linking Carrollton and Mill, something like that, Suzy, yes.
And the piece that I would just raise to the board in advocacy of this is one, this is just a, you know, sort of one step in terms of, you know, working with a very cooperative homeowner who's really willing and eager to work with the township, but just, as this is their most valuable asset, they just want a clear understanding of, you know, if they're going to give the township allowance to utilize this portion of the property. And they just want a very clear understanding of what that might look like in the scope of the project. And I think that should hopefully be understandable. But I did, just from, it happened in an article last month in the Wall Street Journal about children needing neighborhoods where they can walk and bike. And we've lost the art of creating local infrastructure that allows young people to explore, play and lead healthier lives. And, you know, nothing that we don't know, but too much time sitting around indoors may take an even greater toll on young people's mental health, childhood anxieties at record levels with pediatrician groups, and the administration declaring a national emergency in child and adolescent mental health. A study published in the Journal of Pediatrics in 2023 found that the primary cause of the rise in mental disorders is a decline over decades in opportunities for children and teens to play, roam, and engage in other activities independent of direct oversight and control by adults. Walking, exercise, game and stress, but this is, I mean, this is, I think it's one of the more important things that we can do. This happens to be a stretch that is between Bethlehem Pike and Church, which definitely allow for easy kids to easily kind of walk across. So it does connect, of course, in the township. And, you know, it's not a huge project, but as we've seen the success of the Walnut Street path, these are the type of little projects that get people excited about trails and connectedness in the rest of the township. And we don't have a lot of, you know, residents are clamoring to say, hey, we want to partner with township to build this trail. We've got a willing partner right now in these homeowners, and that's why I'd really like to kind of keep them going. So I'm hoping to get support from at least the majority of the board to move that project forward. But I'll give you the articles that add that consideration.
And just one thing to maybe consider, we talked before about trails, sidewalks, just, you know, time and time again, there should be a way to prioritize or somehow rank which projects we want to tackle. And then when those dollars come our way, buy them. And I just feel like they're reporting just to start or cost seems like a lot without doing that. Balance is somewhere along the way, whatever that balance people play in, they're welcome. People's project, I don't know. And then just another, I don't know, maybe other things between that, but having church, it also be interested? And we just haven't, we haven't shown enough, I have no idea, I'm just thinking out loud. If that's, if this is the only, if this five to the fuse, the only avenue that goes through a wetlands, is there 500 feet that doesn't go through a wetlands, that is being much more cost effective? Those are being my hesitations to say, go for it.
Well, I agree with both of you. I mean, I think it would be, it's always good to look at our trail plan that we just spent a lot of time on and see where that falls in priority. And also take advantage when we do have a willing resident that can partner with us that doesn't come along every day. So, you know, I think you check the box, but I'm in favor of the project.
Be sure, you know, check all, you know, set some sort of systematic way to review everything. And I think we just don't have that. And I understand you don't have to wait a year or two years for that, unfortunately, take advantage. But also it's a large, large amount that goes to, you know, other, without any other problems.
Yeah. Mike, when do you need definitive guidance from us? I mean, you said...
Well, I mean, it's not a budgeted item right now. So, I mean, we would need direction from you guys to spend any considerable money on it. Now, Tim did an aerial with a connected two dogs, which was pretty cheap to do, thinking that we could hopefully get together with the landowner. But now as it's gotten to be a more expensive proposition, you know, we didn't want to go forward and do anything without getting direction. Yep. I mean, there's no urgency, doesn't sound like the landowner's going to sell his property anytime soon. But, you know, we don't want to spend any real money on it.
Yeah. All right. So could I suggest maybe take a stab at looking at our plan, sort of where that sits? And maybe by Wednesday, we can have some consensus?
Okay, great. That's all that I had this evening, barring any questions, given the length of your agenda.
Absolutely.
And as far as Walnut Avenue goes?
Yep.
I think people were wondering too about the next steps as far as possible connector trails to that.
Ah, question number two, John, I didn't want to bring that up, but yes. So certainly there has been some background thought to go, you know, to the bottom of Walnut. We had the crossing into the park, but then crossing the creek, kind of heading up toward Pennsylvania Avenue and some walking trails that exist and potentially connecting into Upper Dublin in their trail system is certainly another route that would provide some pedestrian connections if we are indeed interested.
There again, we applied for a Monica 2040 grant just this past round, and we did not get approved, although we had gotten money from Monica 2040 for the phase one. They like the project. They'd like to see us do a little bit more engineering on it before, you know, awarding it. So we have a little bit of legwork to do with SEPTA, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, because we need an easement through both of them. But there again, like you're kind of competing for the same dollars if you're going to use your capital reserve to fund some of this stuff or you wait till your next budget cycle and budget for it. But as Tim said, you know, the potential exists for a great many connections using that trail. Because there's already existing trails in place on both the Penn Manor and Pizzac Preserve properties. And then our new trail on Walnut Avenue would connect to it along the park, so.
Tim, would it be in your purview to look through the trail plan and identify and just any spots that could use a look over to help us?
Yep, sure, sure can do that.
Before Wednesday.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think I would also defer to some township staff who have been, you know, around for many, many years to help use their knowledge and some of that information they have as to where people are walking, where connections are absent, and happy to do that, yes.
And maybe just with the lens of 30 or 40 K approximately, as opposed to, oh, that's, yeah, 300 K. Tell me what's like 30, 40.
In that range.
Loosely, right?
Indeed.
Without having to do a full engineering.
Perfect.
Great, great.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a great day.
All right, very good. Now, I know we have Joyce from REA saying, hang on, I'm just going to pull the audience real quick.
Oh, I was just going to say, I'll come back Wednesday.
You sure?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Rather than rushing through it.
Was it worth it coming?
Yeah. I want to stay and listen to a little of this.
Okay, all right, great. So without any objection, the agenda item regarding a reporting on our sustainability measures and energy savings, we're going to invite Joy back on Wednesday to do this. Okay, great. All right. So I know a lot of folks here for the Little League discussion. Is there anyone else that's in the room for a different agenda item? That's the Mermaid Lane one, okay, great. Okay. Anyone else for another? Yes?
I get the stormy kind of low planning, but we'll be...
For Hawes Lane? Yep, yep. Any other geniuses people are here for? Okay, great, all right. Why don't we knock out Mermaid Lane? As my understanding, there wasn't too much for a discussion on that. Is there anything that we need to discuss with them or?
There's zoning hearing board petition. There's been a variance for the use, the repurposing of abandoned, long abandoned industrial warehouse slash manufacturing building that'd be used for a pickleball facility. They also need, I believe, a variance for parking, strictly based upon the size of the building, not necessarily the practical use of the building. Yeah, they kind of fall under the catch-all. So we, I know Mark took a call today from a resident that lives across the street who was just looking for more information about it, and he directed him to our website where we have the petition and all the plans, copies of which you all have as well.
Yep.
I don't know what the outcome of that was, but individual didn't submit a comment form and didn't, unless they're here.
Okay.
So, but they'll have their opportunity to present hearing board as well.
Okay, so from our standpoint, I think there was no discussion of anyone in opposition in addition. So you still got to go to zoning board, still got to get them to say yes to what you're asking for, but we're not taking a stance on it. So good to go. Good luck. All hail pickleball. Yeah, that's what we're going to do right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, okay. All right, why don't we bang on Hawes Lane real quick? So that's going to be up for a vote, final land development on Wednesday.
Correct.
Would you like to submit a comment? And just for everyone's purpose, when you come to make public comment, please start with your name and address.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Klinger, and my address is 7811 Elm Avenue, Windmore. And I'm here to, I know that this, I've been attending the township meetings about this property and the Planning Commission meetings about this property, 308 402 Hawes Lane. And I represent, I've come as president of Springfield Open Space, which is a nonprofit that was started. We just got our nonprofit 501(c)(3) status this year. And we have, were born from the Friends of Harston Woods, which is the five-acre woodland that is where the 16-townhouse development is going to be built. And in September of 2023, this has been going on for a long time, I was here and we oppose the 16-townhouse development. And we still oppose this 16-townhouse development. It's unclear how many trees are going to be destroyed, mature trees. The, 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 the planning, the plan was pushed through in the summer when many people were on vacation and no comments were, were taken. Or comments were taken, but they were not considered about this property and about this development. It's a 16-townhouse development on two acres between the high school and the elementary school. Since 2016, the developer has been using a tactic of holding a threat of a large institutional byright development and trying to force the township's hand into, into changing it from an institutional zoning to a residential zoning and has gone through many, many, well, maybe not many, many, but several very not appropriate development plans from 60 townhouses to 40 townhouses.
Dr. Klinger, excuse me, a lot of this is like really old history. I mean, we've had...
Yeah, okay.
Tons and tons of public meetings, the settlement agreements.
Yeah, okay, and so would you please let me consider?
Years going on, so I'm just asking.
Do you have, could you time, give me three more minutes then, please?
I can, but if you could just focus on what's the matter at hand now.
But, okay, I'm talking about the matter of hand is that this plan was pushed through in a use agreement with no public comments taken. The use agreement is, has a, on the preserved, and I'll use air quotes, preserved open space, a, the first thing that the township is doing is building a parking lot and a paved path through a very delicate ecosystem. And the, the townhouse development is, 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 is just not appropriate there. And I just want to say, you know, there's nothing I can do about it now except for to hope that the township can not, can maybe move forward in the, in the, when Jeff Harbison was, was interviewing for the Planning Commission meeting, he talked about this changing thing so that the township wouldn't be held hostage by developers making a byright institutional plan and forcing a text amendment. And it's not the best way, I think we can all agree, that not the best way to move forward in terms of fear of like that there's something horrible is going to be built there if we don't give the developer what they want and to move forward in a more rational way. And then finally is that to hope that the, that the commissioners can move forward with the plan as it stands, showing good environmental stewardship, especially considering the open space fund that, that the commissioners would like people to donate to. And I think that people will donate to this, this fund, will be more apt to donate to this fund if they know their voices are being heard and if they know that, that the, there's transparency in the decisions that are being made by the commissioners. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else on that topic? And I'll tell you, I wake up in a cold sweat, having recurring dreams about the public comment we had on that project. So we had lots, had lots of public comment. All right, if there's no other objection, we'll get to the Little League discussion. I do want to, you can stay for it, it might be good. Just, you know, as I stated earlier, we do have a time constraint. So I do want, matters of sort of public interest like this tend to, can go a long time, and they have gone a long time. We do have a hard stop for interviews at nine o'clock. So I just want to just make a quick statement, sort of framing the discussion, maybe filling some people in on some facts they may not be aware of. And then Tom McGeehan, who's the president of Springfield Little League, will, will have time for a statement. And Carrie, are you here? Okay, and then you'll go next, and then we'll go from there. So as most of you are probably aware, there was an incident on Saturday, May 18th, in which an airplane pulling a banner flew over Marlowe and Bysher Fields during Little League baseball games, which appeared to be a very public attempt to intimidate, embarrass, and bully a parent of children who are currently playing in the league and who had questioned scheduling decisions in the minors division specifically, and contacted the district rep, the Little League organization outside of Springfield to confirm information he was given. When subsequent changes to the schedule were made, it was communicated to the league by a member of the board leadership that a single unhappy parent was the cause. First off, we know this is not an easy conversation, given some of the information that is coming to light, the concerns that have been underlying that likely manifested itself into an incident like this. And also given the fact that the league is 100% run by volunteer parents who dedicate their time and effort to make sure we have a robust league for our kids to enjoy. Last week at the Parks and Recs meeting, a few dozen parents came out to express concerns and complaints about the incident related to it, which has led this to be an agenda item for discussion tonight. Conversations with the, with great public interest like this tend to take a lot of time, as I said. But we, we have a hard stop at nine o'clock. So given that a special meeting requires public notice and advertisement, we're also in the time of the year, people start to go away, schools end. We just wanted to welcome as much comment as we could tonight while we have our, our monthly workshop meeting. So we are not going to get to a meaningful resolution by 9:00 PM tonight, but we can be a forum for public comment as much as we can, set the foundation for progress and accountability going forward. With that in mind, if there is a parent, I said, Tom will make a brief statement, Carrie will make a brief statement. And then from there, we're just going to ask the limit to three minutes per comment. If we end up with more time, then you can speak, you can speak more and speak again. But we just want to do that limit just so that as many people can talk as possible. Normally, we don't put a limit on it, but I could tell it would go, we'd probably have like four people talking, then it would be nine o'clock, so. And I just want to set it that there's some basic underlying aspects that we should all be aware of as you think about your comments. One, the board members of our youth sports programs do put in a boatload of time and energy, and Springfield Little League is definitely at the top of that list. They are 100% volunteers. And while that fact does not excuse bad behavior, we all know that they're doing the jobs that few people are willing to sign up for. At best, people usually need to be talked into it. You know, you're not, you don't have contested elections, you have just people willing to say yes. So we can give them some grace when things aren't perfect in the room to make things right. So as I mentioned, the president of the league, Tom McGeehan, we know as well as dedicated times, time, effort, and labor, not just the Springfield Little League, but he helped the softball program build their fields when they moved the veterans. This, this incident of attempting to publicly intimidate and bully is completely unacceptable. There's no place in our township, there's no place with our partner, partner organizations. It is 100% wrong on any level and cannot be tolerated. This is not something that can be quietly shrugged off and moved on from. Otherwise, that will have ripple effects on the reputation and the trust of our community on a massive scale. The truth and accountability here is not negotiable. There are issues with communication decision-making that has, has led to an environment and culture that allowed this to happen, and maybe not everyone is aware of it, even board members. But there's clear that there's work to do when people don't feel safe speaking up or asking questions. You should know that Springfield Little League and Springfield Township are completely separate entities. Springfield Little League is a private nonprofit... Springfield Little League is a private nonprofit organization that is part of the wider Little League organization. The township does not want to be involved with how the organization is run, nor do we have the authority to. However, this instance was a very public display of intimidation and bullying that targeted a resident in our parks while families are there enjoying them. Springfield Little League is a very important partner organization with our township and enjoys priority use of our fields through a land use agreement. And we welcome and love that land use agreement. They they do all sorts of maintenance on those fields and provide for our kids there. So we're not complaining about that agreement. But if if the organization is involved in any way in bullying and intimidation or allowing it to occur through that partnership, it is absolutely our purview to influence and help remedy for the common good. Tonight, we're providing a public venue for people to share their experiences, concerns and suggestions. We are not going to sell it tonight, but we hope we can lead to some accountability, progress and improvement. So I encourage you to be mindful of all encompassing statements. The Little League is not perfect and is not some wild or evil organization full of bad people. Okay, there there are people, there are neighbors, there's things that we can work on. But there's many of you, and I know many township, wouldn't have a negative iota to say, they had a wonderful experience. I could tell you my kids went through, I mean, my son went through the whole thing, my girls played a couple of years, I had a great experience, you know, and it wasn't that long ago. So it's disturbing a little bit that people weren't happy because I just thought it was just the way it was, like I remember, right? So they're not perfect, but they're not evil. So that's why we're here together to fix it. So we also know that the the issue is was amplified with the minors because the minors had such a large number of kids struggling was or scheduling was was just more of a challenge. So the majors had less teams, so there's no issues that arose maybe out of the scheduling, at least that we know. So you may be at an experience at another level and have experienced, you know, nothing of the sort. So so we should all focus here on the culture of feeling safe, the organization as a whole. We don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We recognize the good works and dedication, the many coaches and members over the years and that are currently there now. So with that, I would invite Tom to come.
Thank you, Jim, I appreciate it. Good evening, all. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Tom McGeehan, president of Springfield Little League. Truly honored to be part of this program, part of the program since conception. I'm extremely proud of the families, the volunteers, the players, everybody here. As a community as a whole, this is a stain on our league. I'm here tonight to listen to your concern. Springfield Little League does not condone this type of behavior or support it. Springfield Little League has taken steps to investigate the incident that occurred on May 18th. Initially, we gathered information based on allegations brought forth by our members. We approached individuals within our league who were accused of inappropriate conduct to hear their accounts and gather responses. At this time, we have not been able to determine who caused the incident. We understand that our members have preferred would have preferred a quicker resolution. However, it was critical for us to consult with advisors from Little League International to ensure that any actions that we take were legally sound. I thank you for your time. I do appreciate you coming out and hope to work for resolution to make the program that much better. And I'm here to listen and always approachable. For those that say they I'm not approachable, maybe haven't seen me at the field, but I'm around, I'm approachable, the board's approachable, we have members from the board who are here, we have families who are here to support us as well. So I appreciate taking time out and having conversations with us. And Jim, thank you for your 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 time as well and rest of the board and everybody here.
Tom, I've never seen you bounce baseball bat on. He is there from morning to night.
Every day, I joke with you that you need a cot at the field. It's like I, you are always there, always. My name's Carrie Woodward. I'm a Springfield mom of three sons who all love playing baseball with their friends at Beishofer and Marlowe, and I'm so appreciative of our Little League program, which has helped grow my son's skill and knowledge and love of game. Baseball is the heart of my family's spring and summer months, and I know that Springfield Little League is run by volunteers, and I am truly so grateful for their time and commitment. Caroline, the queen. That being said, I've felt really upset and uncomfortable, some of the things that have been happening over the last few weeks and the example it sets for my sons. Many fellow parents have expressed to me reluctance to share their views for fear of retaliation against themselves and their children. My remarks tonight have been reviewed and essentially cosigned by many fellow parents who did not feel comfortable to speak here this evening for fear of that reprisal. And in fact, 369 concerned community members have signed an online petition calling for accountability from the Board of S L L. Many people are scared to speak up, and I'm hoping to give voice to many of our concerns and make some suggestions to move the league forward with integrity, trust and transparency. I really do not see it as an us versus them, like I want us to all move together on this. The airplane flyover that targeted a Little League family and other forms of adult bullying should have no place in S L L. While no one has taken accountability for that egregious action taken against a fellow parent, it's especially concerning that the act was in retaliation against a parent who rightly questioned the league's initial decision to shorten the in-house season in favor of travel teams beginning their tournament play for the second year in a row. The person targeted by the flyover bullying was using his voice to advocate for inclusivity and fairness, aligned with the values published on the township's Park and Rec website for youth sports here in town. As a concerned parent who very much wants to continue to enjoy many more years of Springfield Little League baseball with my three little boys, I hope that the Board of Commissioners can exert their influence to help us land the plane, for lack of a better term. There are a few key actions that I believe ought to be taken to move forward with trust and transparency. Number one, the leaders of the board should be required to fulfill their commitment to report back to parents on the outcome of their investigation of the airplane flyover on May 18th, and there should be accountability and consequences for those who are responsible and complicit in this act. On the morning of the flyover, parents witnessed two S L L board members who were coaching a game, laughing and taking photos and videos of the flyover at Beishofer Fields in front of their minor league players. It's unacceptable that they did not immediately condemn, but instead seemed complicit with this inappropriate act of bullying. If any board leaders were responsible for the flyover or involved with it in any way, they should be held accountable and they should be removed from board leadership, commissioner and coaching positions in the league. Bullying like this can't be tolerated among people who are supposed to be role models for our sons. Apart from the plane incident, it seems evident that the practices of the current board and commissioners have not fully represented all of the players in the league and have seemed to prioritize the minority of travel players over the majority of in-house players. This is a key access issue for you all to consider as the stewards of our public fields. There are questions of facility access, fields, batting cages and the indoor field house. The township should require the Board of S L L to create a system of paper or electronic logs to monitor usage of the facilities and make sure that it's public, open and equitable. The Board of Commissioners should encourage or require Springfield Little League to hold fair, open and transparent elections in alignment with Little League International's guidance. Term limits for board members are absent from the bylaws, they should be instituted and enforced. Board vacancies, as well as the nomination and election process, ought to be made clear and well advertised among the parents of the league. One suggestion is resolving to reserve 50% of member seats for women. This would bring a different perspective to the board and has seemed to work very successfully for the thriving Springfield Softball League and neighboring leagues. Given the distrust that has been revealed throughout this incident, the S L L board should be encouraged or required by the commissioners to adopt practices and policies that maximize transparency so that trust and integrity can be restored. Little League International has excellent guidance for best practices and policies on its website. This guidance should be followed. The bylaws, policies, annual budget, facility usage report, board meeting agendas and board meeting minutes ought to be made public and posted on the S L L website in alignment with best practices. Many parents, including myself, are willing to serve on an interim committee or advisory committee to help get management and organizational systems of the Little League back on track so that trust, transparency and integrity can be restored for Springfield Little League. Thank you all for your time and attention, as well as your commitment and service to our township.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll open it up to public comment. Anyone can come to the microphone. Again, I just ask you to limit it to three minutes, and the floor is open, just start with your name and address.
My name is Marielle Marsh. I live at 1504 Lucan Road, Baseball Row. Moments make Little League a memorable experience. I'm an accidental and perhaps reluctant baseball parent at first. I didn't understand, I didn't get it, although I should have known. My husband has a collection of moments that shaped his experience with baseball as a player and coach long before our family was a part of Springfield Little League. Still, at first, I hoped our son would tire of it, he's also a soccer player. He didn't. Our son just wrapped up his first year in the majors and is on his fourth year with the travel program. I quickly learned that there is goodness here and have my own collection of moments that I, as a community member, fan, friend, volunteer and proud parent will cherish. Baseball became a part of our family's summer tradition. Many of the values that are important to our family are paramount to a successful Little League, integrity, inclusion, teamwork, sportsmanship, hard work, grit, gratitude and a whole lot of fun. The incidents that bring us here tonight have sparked many discussions amongst our family, including with our son, about our values and standing up for what is right and speaking out against what is wrong. Not surprisingly, our son sees these events with a clarity and maturity that I wish was mirrored by others, including those in positions of leadership. Moments make Little League a memorable experience. Whether those moments include standing behind the fence, sweating it out with other families during an exciting in-house championship, catch up on the week's happenings during an easy Saturday game, the hopeful feeling after receiving words of encouragement from your coach after striking out, including some folks here, picking yourself up to play again after losing 15 to nothing, kids playing Run the Bases, squealing with joy as the sun goes down at Beishofer with bellies full of hot dogs and pretzels. My family's Little League experience will be a mosaic of moments that will make our collective experiences memorable, most notably for our son. None of those moments should involve acts of intimidation or harassment. None of these moments should include a Saturday morning laced with a Piper L21 Super Cub airplane dragging a banner aimed at threatening and intimidating anyone, let alone a member of our community, volunteer and friend of the league, parent and advocate for our kids. None of these moments should involve needing to have to have hard discussions with our child about potentially having to withdraw from the league if it can't commit to its own values. Our community recognizes this as we're all here today. This is an easy one. We must work together through teamwork to collectively stand up against this hateful and outrageous conduct. We need to do better. The board is charged with duties of loyalty and care to Springfield Little League. Before tonight's meeting, I asked my son what he's learned through Little League, and I urge the board to consider what Springfield Little League has taught my son. Play hard and try your best. If you can't commit to fulfilling your responsibilities, please step away. Be a good teammate and show respect to the values of the league, our community, parents, each other, and most importantly, the kids. Do not disparage others, do not threaten others, in person, by email or by airplane. In the face of failure, don't give up, do better. There is more than one way to affect the game. Do your part to make an impact and lead by example and with kindness and respect so that our children can focus on their next at bat and the moments that make Little League a memorable experience for all the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could provide some context from Parks and Rec while we figure out. Sure.
Yeah, it's kind of the microphone, or otherwise it won't go on the transmitter.
My name's Sean Schwartz. I live at 117 East Mill Road. I'm the cooperative homeowner, by the way. So I can only speak to my experience. I think before you get involved and you're on the outside, it's just a parent who's not a coach, you're involved in any capacity, it's very easy to go there and to think that's why did they do that? They're in it for themselves or or there's bad motives, right? Not everybody's a super polished person, but you know, you judge people by the things they do day to day. Don't judge them by or a league and by the way, associating and already concluding that it was conducted by by the board. No one knows that, right? Judge judging them by the things they do every day, right? So I decided, I wasn't a happy parent at one time, and I but you know what? It was my problem because I wasn't involved, right? I wasn't there, I wasn't a part of the conversation, I wasn't coaching. I wasn't doing anything. I wasn't doing anything other than complaining. I got involved and I learned that these 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 villains, these bad people, they were actually the people who are making it possible to have such a nice field, to have such a nice program, to have the nice things that we have. People make mistakes, right? Some of them are worse than others. It's hard to run anything, it's hard to run your own house, right? Imagine keeping, running 600 households, right? Keeping everybody happy. Get people some grace, it's very easy to be a critic. So I think be careful what you ask for. You want to immediately get everybody to step aside and take it over, the league will be over. Let's be honest. And so so let's talk about what what we, everybody has a lot of platitudes and a lot of like rah rah, good things to say about how we're going to fix this, but let's talk about what's really happened, right? Yeah, there was an event that happened, and then there were immediate events that precipitated that, but but there's a whole backstory here that that we get up here and we say, oh, we don't want to jump to conclusions and we have no say over anything, but then we start reading out things that are that are definitely prepared to be in such a manner that you're swaying it towards one way. If we want to talk about the facts, the facts didn't start yesterday, a month before, the facts started well before that. There's two people fighting, and that's what it comes down to. So let's let's talk about what's going on here. Let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. I'm not taking a side, but I think, you know, if you want to affect change, go to the next election and be elected to the board, coach a team. But the way to affect change is not to come in here and to throw it all away and demand this or demand that. Be a part of the process, learn to work with people. You have a problem with somebody, call them up, try every angle you can, right? You're 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 an outsider. When you're an outsider, you got to become an insider before you can affect change. So that's all I'm going to say, this is common sense stuff. And 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 listen, I'm not taking sides, but we've got to be careful about, and I think we got to be careful, what's the what are the township, like what are we doing here? Like what like, I know what we're doing here, I think that there's a there there in some ways, but is it a real there there? And and shouldn't we be handling this as like a public, I mean, a private thing rather than now the government's involved? Because that kind of, given the people involved, has a has a strange sheen to it. So I'm not trying to upset anybody, but I think we need to speak about real facts and what's really going on instead of like in platitudes and that's all.
Thank you.
I'm Matt Pimento. I'm at 500 East Graves Lane, been part of the community for three and a half years and love it here. I've got a son who was in Little League, and I grew up with Little League. My son decided he's not continuing in Little League. My wife said, well, why are you, why are you going to show up at this thing? You know, your son's not part of it. And and I think she had heard of, you know, through neighbors and potential intimidation and people not wanting to speak and what have you. And and I just never liked that as a general rule, that we don't want to be part of a community that doesn't allow for openness and tolerance and communication. I think that's that's one of the reasons I joined this community is because I'd heard good things about this community, and it's proven out to be that way. So I certainly don't want to cast any bad, you know, thing on anyone, right? And I appreciate, I've been a Little League coach before I had a child, and I know it's not easy, and there's a lot of work that's involved, and I appreciate all of that. And I think that Little League and sports in a community is like foundational, really great value stuff, right? And I was also told by some of my colleagues and friends, Matt, you know, let other people talk and, you know, maybe if there's a need for you to speak up. I have to, I feel like I was compelled based off that last conversation a little bit. And And what I would say is like, first of all, my needs were addressed, I think, by you, Jim, just by your opening statement. The fact that you said that intimidation will not be tolerated. I mean, that's, that's what I wanted to hear, frankly, right? Now, there's also the, the next steps of how you make sure that happens, right? But to me, that's the most important thing, right? Do we believe that? Do we support that as a community? And I believe we do, right? I think that statement, you know, says a lot. The other thing that I think is related to that is transparency. And, and so like when you say, when someone says we need to know more about the backstory, amen. Like, let's, what is the backstory, right? And if you come up here and say you shouldn't be saying anything to anyone else until you know the backstory, well, tell us the backstory. You know, I mean, and if it's a, if it's a fight between two people, who are the two people? You know, I mean, I, I don't, I think that we, we're here for open dialogue, for transparency, for clarity. And I don't think that anyone, I mean, I don't, I'll speak for myself, right? I mean, I don't know the people, the principals involved. I know a lot of the other parents. I've heard a lot of things that are frankly disturbing, you know? And I don't think that most of the community wants, at least what I've heard, but I don't even know how much of that is completely accurate to everyone else's point, right? So let's get to some clarity. Let's, let's, you know, if there's a backstory, don't just say there's a backstory, tell us what the backstory is. I mean, that's fair, isn't it? I think that's fair. So that's, that's all my comment.
Thank you.
Sit up. I swear I'm pushing the button. So you, you, you want to add something?
Well, those who may have thoughts, want to gather themselves to think, you know, it's can be, by the way, the word intimidation is used around in a different context, it is intimidating to come up here and speak in front of a room full of people, right? No matter what you want to say, it's a scary thing to do. We've been trying to teach our kids the same when they're little. I want to give some context for Parks and Rec and why it's risen to, to some people's questions of why is it here before us? Why is it relevant? How is the township involved? You know, John, you asked. I, I think it goes without saying that we have a special relationship and partnership and that the fields are a privilege that we, as a township, you know, proffered to the Little League for many, many years historically to, to what Little League does, right? And so that trust has always been there. And I think when this came to light and came across my desk at the Parks and Recreation Liaison, it felt it behooved me at least to consider how it would impact us because, again, the bullying, intimidation, clearly pointing someone out, intending to humiliate them, that doesn't have a place or connection, as far as I knew, ever. In the, in the two and a half years I've been in this seat, I've never heard a wayward word about Little League, right? That doesn't have a place here. And so that's how we started working through the Parks and Rec Committee, and then, you know, other events happened that inspired parents to come forward. But throughout that conversation, what I think I want to echo is that the the word bullying, the words intimidation, being uncomfortable and scared to come and speak, that also concerns me because really that all relates to creating safe places, healthy places, ones that, a healthy place is one without bullying, obviously, and intimidation. And inclusive spaces for people to feel comfortable to enact their right to, right to speak about anything, but particularly about those things that our township does have a hand in. We do offer this privilege to Little League. They're not softball fields. They're not a whole course of pickleball courts. They're not just trees for everyone to enjoy, although someone might want that. Who spoke earlier about open space, for example? There's many competing interests in this township. We understand that. So that's how it landed at Parks and Rec to kind of think about, and I think there are conversations that we will be thinking about. I mean, I think inherently in there is a land use agreement that is, again, unique to Little Ball, Little League, baseball and softball. Things that maybe we hadn't had to think about before. And this forum, I think, is important and valuable and necessary, unfortunately necessary because there was a sensibility, the constituents of ours were not able to speak up and speak out about challenges that they've had, that there was no other avenue. And I mean, if there is an avenue here, the door is open. The end of that avenue, as you alluded to, is really challenging, right? I mean, by gosh, you're saying, you know, where's that lead? Or even the terms that I just heard, be careful what you ask for. Is it a real there there? Those to me feel very threatening in a way, right? In its own way. I'm not saying you have to agree or disagree, but someone might hear that and go, gosh, you know, can someone really do something one way or the other? And in my view and where I sit, I feel like that's not fair to imply in any way that the township doesn't have her view over those properties, that there is no opportunity, that this possibility that, you know, theoretically, Little League's going to go away because of one, two, three, four, five people. I mean, I just don't think that's really fair, and it does create a sensibility of intimidation and threats for people, from my view. And I think that's borne out in the, in the conversations that came for us at the Parks and Rec Committee. And I think I've heard some of that here before. And I think I'm hearing that again. Those, that's just language that's concerning and concerning for the privileges that Little League does have. So that's the view from Parks and Rec. I did speak with all the Parks and Rec committee members who were, and by the way, both Jim and Brendan were at those, at the meeting. Committee members who felt that it was really within our commissioners' purview to figure out the next steps and figure out what value the committee could add to the conversation. But unequivocally, the committee wants to condemn any type of bullying behavior, both at the department and, you know, now having to take into consideration how we incorporate that into the land use agreement. So that's, and Jim and Brendan, if you want to speak to, if I said something different than what you heard, please, please do.
I think before I go, I'm going back up to the floor if anybody wants to speak.
Hi, everyone. For those of you I haven't had the pleasure of meeting, my name is Jackie Eckoff, and I have been a proud parent of the Springfield Little League since 2017. Over the years, I have actively volunteered and led various events such as bag bingo, holiday cookie sales, Family Fun Day, and trunk or treat. I dedicate my time to this league because I deeply love this community and have a passion for creating memorable experiences for our children. They are the heart and soul of this organization. Before I continue, I want to address the incident that occurred on May 18th. It was an unfortunate and unacceptable event that should not have happened. Today, however, I want to focus on the Little League that I know and hold dear. Our Little League is a treasured community institution that values teamwork, sportsmanship, and the growth and development of young players. It thrives on the selfless dedication of volunteers, especially the board members, with whom I have personal experience. They contribute their time to coaching, organizing games, maintaining the fields, and creating an environment where children can learn and thrive. My 10-year-old son discovered his love for baseball through this league. He participates in in-house, travel, fall, and pickup games whenever he can. His passion for the sport is matched only for his love for this community. It is within this community that my son has learned important values such as teamwork, sportsmanship, perseverance, respect, and leadership. When he struggled with anxiety, this community provided him with a safe space. His coaches offered him comfort, confidence, and reassurance. Through this league, we have gained friends who have become like family. I share this personal story because I believe that the incident that occurred does not define our organization as a whole. Springfield Little League is so much more than that isolated event. It is, in my opinion, the most positive asset to our community for our children. It is a place that fosters growth, builds character, and shapes our children into responsible and resilient individuals. It is a place my child wants to be, even when he doesn't have a game or practice. Let us not allow one incident to overshadow the countless moments of joy, growth, and camaraderie that our Little League has provided. While I acknowledge the concerns and need for addressing issues, I would like to ask what steps we can take to address these concerns effectively, both in the short and long term. We need to foster a constructive dialogue, and as someone previously shared, that will not be done by nine o'clock tonight. How can we work together to resolve the current issues in a way that satisfies those seeking change and helps prevent further conflict or negative attention, which we are currently bringing to this league? I'm willing to be a part of that solution.
I'm going to apologize now. I have no voice. My name is Jill Forster. I live at 1201 Green Hill Road in Flower Town. I'm looking out in this audience. I know a lot of you, and you know me, because I dedicate a tremendous amount of time to this community, not just with Little League, which I'm currently retired from. I know you miss me, but also from many other things, like our swim team that I just left, we're helping with that. I'm also a graduate of Springfield Township High School, grew up here. This has been my community for life. And I'm a teacher. I do not teach here, but I am a teacher. And I think that's what we are all about, the kids. And I agree with you, all of you, that there needs to be things put in place so that nobody feels unsafe. Nobody feels uncomfortable. But I have to be honest, I'm here today because I know the people that have given their blood, sweat, tears, no loss of time with family, hours leading their full-time job, going to another full-time job. And I'm concerned that we have given a blanket to the people that are leading our organization, our coaches, our volunteers, a lot of them women. And it's being swept under the rug, and we're all being labeled the plain people. That's a real problem for me because these people are dear to me, and I know them inside and out. They've been part of my life since my children were eight. And I'm really concerned about that. When there's a bully in my classroom, I don't generalize with the entire class. They're not all bullies. I deal with the bully. I deal with the person who's the problem. And I understand we're trying to figure that out, but my real concern is that this Little League is getting a reputation from one poor choice and the influence that that person is having. And I'm hearing about it in other communities. I don't want that reputation, but I want the volunteers and the people that have been part of this organization that are good people to stop being slandered. I'm not okay with that. I am all about the kids. It's my life. I'm a passionate person. These people over here know that, and they're laughing because they see it, but they're proud at the same time because this is who I am 24/7. I will not tolerate bullying. I will not. My child has been subjected to it, and the people that have defended them are there. So I want to be part of the solution. I want to help. I don't want anyone to feel intimidated, but please stop generalizing to people that are in an argument for an organization. You're hurting us and our kids. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Doyle, and I'm a newer member of the Springfield Township. I moved here in 2021 with my son and was thrilled to do so. Had heard nothing but amazing things about the people, the places, and the overall experience that Springfield offers to a family. I am not going to speak about the incident. I honestly don't really know anything about it. I was away that weekend. But more importantly, I am disheartened to hear that there is so much infighting and slandering going on and rumors that is detracting from what we're all supposed to be here for, which is a healthy, safe place for our kids to have a good experience, to learn about how to be good citizens and bring each other up when things go wrong and find solutions. So maybe there needs to be more transparency, transparency, excuse me. But I've had nothing but a positive experience, both in-house, on travel team, in any way, shape, or form on the fields. I always felt everyone helped each other out. We all volunteered through signup genius. I've had a couple emails. We know there's plenty of ways to get involved, and Tom has personally responded to my emails. I've never met you in person, Tom, but I know you've been around and I've seen you, and you've always responded to my emails. So I guess I just wanted to say I've had a wonderful experience and I don't want that to change, so.
Thank you.
Hey, my name's John Halligan, 301 Integrity Avenue. Most of the people in here know me. Some, I don't recognize you, so age board members know me. I've been in this township 67 years, and I've been part of Orland Little League, now Springfield, 33. So I think I believe in Little League. My wife and I and many, many volunteers run Challenger League, one of the most unique things we've done and brought to this township. I'm not happy with this, and I think everyone that knows me. And I'm also not happy with how, how we responded, but that everybody's, you know, against us, wants to throw us out. I hear you. And I was at a tournament director's meeting the other night with George Davis on how do we, how do we resolve this stuff? I have not met with the board, but I stepped up to be on the board. There has to be some sort of vote, but I have District 22's blessing to resolve issues. So I haven't met with them yet. But I'm going to be the one you approach. If you don't want, or your kids don't want to talk to someone on the board, you're going to go through me, and then you're going to meet us all, and you're going to see, we're open-minded. We all have full-time jobs. In fact, I work in Collegeville at a chemical company, and then I cut lawns. In fact, we just did Marlow Field, my son and I. So I have to stand like I had to the other meeting because I'm cramping, as I said, 67. So we hear you. Changes are coming. Big changes are coming. You know, and the transparency and everything you want. And we're going to meet. And if you're intimidated, and I, I know this board, and it's great, and, and the women that help us run this. So what I'm trying to tell you, what I'm getting out there, you're going to hear from us. There's going to be better websites, you know, District 22 or Springfield Little League. So, and we'll put out there, what do we have? Meetings. I used to hold general meetings way back in the 90s. Everybody could come. They do in the beginning, but everyone's busy. So what I'm saying is, we hear you, and we're going to address a lot of stuff in the near future. Now, some of us were game directors too, and that starts next week, and we'll be busy through July, so. It's easy to get my email, my cellphone, and I always answer. And then we're going to, we're going to work on these issues as a group, and we invite you to work with us. Thank you.
Brian Sokol, 707 Suede Road. Grew up here. My first job is cutting the grass at Marlow Field. So I have a long experience, but I'm relatively new back to the township. Have had, since my son started with Little League, have had a great experience. I volunteered to coach, but I appreciate the people who are more experienced than I am in coaching and running the leagues. My brother, for example, if anybody knows Bob Sokol, he was involved with the league for a very long time, and he still probably involves some way. I think overhearing all this from when this started with the incident and coming to last week's meeting and now this meeting, it seems that, from my standpoint, is that the lack of transparency is what has been the problem, that the incident that happened, I agree, I don't think anybody should be thrown under the bus for one bad incident, even how egregious it was. And, you know, clearly it was egregious, whatever it was. I think, though, that the fact that the board has not come out quickly to respond to the dramatic situation is what also kind of inflamed the problem. And what I just want to say is that I do appreciate you saying that changes are coming, and those issues are going to be addressed, which is wonderful, because and those issues are going to be addressed, which is wonderful, because nobody wants to see the league falter or fail or have a bad reputation. But I think the people who see it as a problem are looking for answers quickly and for someone as a part of the board to sort of get their arms around it. Hold a meeting, get together. You know, again, easier said than done, but perhaps that could help also alleviate some of the pressure in this situation. Because as lots of parents have said, they're willing to work, they're willing to present. I think, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but Carrie, the suggestions that you made seem completely reasonable, seem completely legitimate to sit down and start that as a conversation. Let's all just have a conversation, go through those. What is that possible? Like, why not do some of those things? And I think that might sort of deflate the stress that's going on here. So I just encourage everybody to help and try to, maybe the board can jump out in front of this a little bit more, because you are appreciated. People do love all the work that everybody does, and I think that the sooner it can be addressed, the quicker you get in front of it, the more beneficial it's going to be for the township and for everyone. So I look forward to seeing the changes, because I think a lot of people want to see that. So that's all I just wanted to say. Thank you.
My name is Joe Bennis. I'm a grandparent to a 10-year-old boy who plays in Springfield. I don't live in Springfield, but I go to the games. I have a three-year-old grandson who's going to be part of this community. I think this community is great. I live in Upper Dublin. I coached Springfield baseball.
Do you get that in minutes?
After I got out of the Marine Corps at 19, and I started coaching Holy Martyrs. So I know this community very well. I don't know all the particulars of what's going on, but I do know that it's very important for my grandson, who loves sports, all sports, especially baseball. And I do know that the team that he plays on, there's something that's going on there, but what I've seen is nothing but goodness. So I'm sitting back here, one side's clapping, the other side doesn't clap. You guys got to get it together, everybody. Thank you very much.
If anyone wants to talk, please do. I mean, don't, this is the time. So if you're nervous or something, I get it, but.
Hi. My name's Kristia Donahue, 508 Drayton Road. I am also a board president of a local community organization here, the EEHSP, the Unfield Orenheim Home School Partnership, this year, my first year. We represent the 1,200 families in the elementary schools in Springfield Township. My son plays, I always get them confused, he's six, so I think he plays AAA, AA, one of them. He's loved it. He did two years of T-ball. It's been amazing to see him grow this year and love the game. I'm not a Springfield lifer. I'm from Los Angeles. I am very much a fish out of water in this community in many ways, and yet, this is where I want to raise my family. I want to be a part of the solution. I don't want to be a part of problems. That's why I kind of, in my own way, reluctantly took on my position this year, because there was nobody who wanted to do it, because that's always what people say. I've actually found that people do want to do it, they just have to be sought out. I have several board members actually here. I have several people who helped with events here this year. We have to just put the work in to find them, and they're there. And I'm also a public relations executive, so on the flip side, it was a little hard to see how this has been handled. I would be more than happy to work cohesively with you to help your board be more transparent. We've had to do a lot of that ourselves this year with just being more open to the community, building, rebuilding after COVID. We manage a budget probably around the same size as yours, I would imagine, and there's a lot of questions for us too, about what we do with our money and where it goes, and that's fair. Our community should ask that. I actually, in kind of learning more about all of this, discovered that with Little League, every family should be able to play, no matter of any, you know, issues with finances. We've made a big effort of that on our own with the school district, with all of our events. There's 20% of families in our township qualify for free lunches, food throughout the summer. And I think a lot of people are surprised by that, but it is the case. I would love to know more about how the Little League is reaching those families. I'd be more than happy to work with the Little League to ensure that we're expanding ourselves as a true community organization that reaches families in need and that are, you know, working with our school social workers, and I'm not, maybe you do. Okay. I just think that as a community organization, it should feel good. I mean, 0.2% of our kids are going to go on to do more with these baseball careers, and so it should just be fun, and it should be a really great opportunity to make friends and meet, you know, neighbors and just build a more robust community. So thank you.
John Halligan, 301 Integrity Avenue. We do, the board does reach out to find out if there's children that it can't afford to play. You have single moms, you have just bad home life situations, and I think we did three children this year, and it can be the older kids too. It's anyone that we find can't play in the league, and that's done anonymously. The foundation does not know who it is. The board just says, we have a child can't play baseball, and you would know what that foundation is. It's Shane's Kindness. And yes, my wife and I run Shane's Kindness, so.
I do want to say something, and I'm trying not to be a Debbie Downer, but I think everyone means it when they say bullying isn't, we're not going to tolerate it, but it's like something that's in the manual and people like say it, but like, I don't really know what that means here until we know what happened and who did this. Because everyone seems to say, what happened was horrible. Now, I do reject, a couple people said that this was something between two individuals and not a league matter. And I just completely reject that idea. I mean, obviously, the dispute arose out of operations of the league, and someone said something about, you know, judge someone by their worst act, and I completely agree with that. There is nothing that that parent could have done, even if he was the biggest jerk in the world, that should have led to this. It just shouldn't have happened. And another person said something about feeling that everyone's being vilified and blamed and the bucket, and believe me, I have nuanced views on everything. It's my own stupid curse in my brain. Like, I don't see, the board is not a monolith more like than any one in this room is. I know that there was dissent amongst the board about the statement and when it was coming out. So not like the board is all agreement at all time internally, but if there was any sense of public outcry and people blaming, there's been three weeks of basically silence, you know, since it happened. So the board is responsible for their own response. Okay, now, it's my understanding that it's a combination of bad advice that they got and just disagreement amongst the board. Some people wanted to put out a statement quickly, some people not. And what happened was, it didn't come out at all. A statement did come out, I think 10 days later, but it basically said nothing. And I've said all this to Tom face-to-face. I'm not going to say anything, I wouldn't say to him directly. It was a completely inadequate response. I mean, just like eighth-grade PR 101. So if that feeling is out there that everyone's talking about it and blaming everyone and blaming the board, well, there was a void there left that the board should have acted immediately and said, this is not tolerated, not condoned, we're going to find out what happened. And when you say you're going to find out what happened, you got to mean it. So what does it mean that you're not going to tolerate it? Does it mean we're going to talk about it and then move on and shrug our shoulders and say we don't know who did it? Because this is not a mystery, some complicated mystery. This information can and will be known eventually. So it's a matter of if the board is a willing participant and really means it. And when I say that, no one should want to know more than the Little League. It's your reputation. It's the trust of your organization. The people in that organization that are appalled by this, they are the ones that should want resolution this more than any other parent, because this is, because all those things that you said about wonderful, they're all true. They're all true. And there's wonderful people that are part of the board and coach, it is all true. And your organization is getting sullied because of a few bad actors. But that's the way life goes, and if those actors are part of your organization, you've got to root it out. Because I don't think anyone believes, and I've said this to Tom directly too, I don't think anyone believes that there's not people out there that know who was behind this. People don't do things like this and not tell people. You have to have the motivation, the temperament, the immaturity to do something like this, and usually when people do that, they brag about it before, during, or after. So do I think it's some crazy psychopath who is not involved with the Little League that decided to do this? Like, I mean, this is not a court of law. I don't have any proof, but I have a brain. Like, that just is not true. So it is a league matter, and the league needs to want to handle it, because all those wonderful things that people are saying, they're all true. But the fact that this is a major issue, and if you're saying that bullying is wrong, you're saying a penalty is right, then you've got to get there. You can't just get to, we have some new board members and we're going to forget it ever happened. So that's what I hope for, because I don't want this, we don't want to deal with this. Again, we don't want to be your operations. We just want to hear the stories, see the smiles every Saturday, and then move on to a better trusting relationship. So, but I just had to reject the idea that, you know, that the board is not responsible for its own actions about this. And some of that pushback is because of the inaction. And I'm glad Tom made a statement tonight. If he said those things, you know, two, three days after it first happened, probably having
Zach McGeed, 1616 Clive Road in Orland. I was debating whether to say anything here, because I struggle with not wanting this discussion about what I think is severely problematic with the leadership of the league revolving around me, just because the plane was flown overhead with my name on it. Okay? I know, thank you for, you know, keeping my name out of it. Everybody knows who it was. It was my name on the plane, right?
What's your name for the record?
Zachary McGeed.
I'm sorry, it was a bit joke.
But listening here, a lot of people are, at least some people, I'm sorry, are making it out, two things. Like, one, that the plane flying overhead was an isolated incident, that's the only problem. It was the most visible problem that brought a lot of people finally to their feet after talking to each other for years and complaining for years about issues with Little League leadership. I've been hearing that from parents. I've been saying it to parents. Someone said, get involved so that you know what you're talking about. I've coached from AA, AAA, minors, two years. I served as the commissioner of the minors last year. I know intimately what's going on. I also have a son who does play travel, so I'm not a guy with intramural-only kids who's railing against the travel teams. I just want things to be fair, and what I discovered last year when I was in that role as commissioner was that any challenge to what, I'll say names here, because it's not everyone on the board, what Paul Greenberg wants to do and what Tom enables him to do and gives his stamp of approval on gets done, and anyone who challenges it is bullied into backing down, and that's been happening for years. I struggled with whether to say anything last year, and I ultimately let things go as they did when the season was canceled prematurely, the regular season. But there are issues with transparency, and there are issues with being willing to listen to anyone who is not a group of two or three or four people at the top, and it's not something that happens in other sports leagues. I've coached in Springfield Soccer Club. I've had kids in Spartan Lacrosse. I have not seen this in any other organization. And it is unfortunate, because there are dozens, if not 100-plus, coaches volunteering their time, doing great things, and even the board members who I'm complaining about, I acknowledge, do a tremendous amount of work and do things that are good for the community and league. Like, absolutely. But it doesn't give those people the right to treat the league and the facilities like they belong to only them, and that they can do whatever they want with them. And I raised issues with this last year. I asked for, for example, for bylaws before last year's annual meeting, so that I could try to participate. Instead of supplying them to me, I got a call saying, why do you want them? I mean, these are things that should just be posted on the website anyway. Why do you want them? What's this about? I said, I want to be able to participate meaningfully. I didn't get them for another 12 days. The document was a, I don't know, an unsigned Word document that was, said it was created two days earlier. Take that for whatever it's worth. And it offered no avenue for participating in a process. It didn't say how you become a member who can vote. It didn't outline a real voting process. It didn't say any sort of term limits or term length for people who served on the board. And the impression that I got when talking to people was that they served indefinitely until they voluntarily resigned. So I don't see an avenue for change through that process, so I didn't participate in that meeting. I raised another issue about access to the new indoor facility, because it seemed it was only being given to Springfield Baseball Club teams, which is a separate entity. It's not Springfield Little League. I put my concerns in writing. I was asked to attend a closed meeting instead of responding in writing. That was not on the record. I expressed again concerns about transparency and a lack of it at that meeting in March. And all that precipitated anything in May was asking the district administrator to confirm if the explanation we were given was correct. That's it. I didn't ask him to cancel anything. I didn't ask him to even contact the Little League. I just want transparency. I want engagement with parents and community members, and I think the culture of a few is that because they put in so much work, the league belongs to them, and they can do whatever they want, and if you question it, you'll be bullied. I also will note, it's June 10th. This was the first time I heard the league say that they condemned that action from May 18th, very first time. The investigation that's been going on for three weeks has not included contacting me, my wife, or my children, the victims, to see how it impacted them, what happened to us, how we felt. I doubt there's much of an investigation going on, to be quite honest. I also didn't hear what will happen if we determine who it was. We condemn it. Okay, if we determine who flew the plane, are they out of the league? Not just off the board, out of the league, not coaching? Like, an answer to that. Okay, we don't know who flew the plane. We know two board members were seen publicly laughing, pointing, and taking pictures of the plane, clearly complicit in knowing what it was about. No action about that.
I did not put a timer for him. He had the courage to speak. He's the victim of this entire incident. He can speak.
There continue to be people who don't want to speak up. I continue honestly to worry about continuing to push this issue, because I legitimately fear for actual, like, safety and my family's safety. And that's, the fact that that is an actual thing that's going through my mind and my wife's mind and that we talk about is an absolute sin. So.
Thank you.
Anybody? Sorry, it doesn't get on the, it doesn't get heard by the recording.
Again, um, eighteen Sandy Run Circle over there. Um, I'm just curious, are there bylaws that apply to the National Little League that everyone typically adheres to? Are those posted on a website? So the National Little? And do we know?
Carrie, we're not getting it on the recording, just see it.
Oh, they're not, okay. Just curious. And do we know anything about other Little Leagues that we play against? Do they have their own private bylaws as well? Okay.
I'm sorry, I have no voice as well. Apologize. Um, my name is Stephanie Cohen. I'm two forty-four Arlington Road, Flower Town. And I'm happy to follow Zach. Um, I'm here because my son's on his son's team. And, um, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't even there to see the plane because I try not to be there for all the pre and the votes and try to get there for the games as much as I can. But honestly, most people probably don't see me as much because I work more. My husband can volunteer and coach and have a second job, um, with you guys at the Little League. Um, because it's, it's, um, the Little League is amazing. And, um, everybody, you know, puts so much time into it and we are grateful for that. And my family does spend three seasons, um, there. And I share from April to August, um, where they live at least. Um, but I am here because of that incident. Um, it was very public. It was in the community. It's not just, you know, politics and gossip and whatever. It's in the community, in the air. And it's, it was disgusting. And I think it does need to be about that, um, and then everything else. You know, the good, all the good, all the bad. There's, there's a lot of, you know, I, I really only know all the good. I'm not as involved to know about, to talk about all the issues. But this is why we're here, because it's in our township. And I want to be proud of it, our township where I live. And, you know, people do talk about it and I don't really care what other people think. But in a sense, like, we need our kids to be proud and we need our kids to know that we stand up to, not a bully, but we stand up to bullying. Like, we have to stand up to it. Otherwise, you're just a part of it. We need to stand up to it. We need to have the transparency, do the investigation, and come up with a conclusion. Because if we don't, we're all taking our time, you know, now, last week, all, all this time. We need to come together and find solutions and make some progress.
Thank you.
Hi, Jackie Yakoff again. I just want clarity on one comment that was made earlier. Susanna, you mentioned something about a land agreement and that there are multiple parties who would potentially have interest in utilizing that land. That's why I'm here tonight, because I've heard rumors about perhaps a land agreement being pulled. I'd like to better understand what has been asked related to that. Because I think we can all agree here, that is not the answer to take away Little League from six hundred and fifty families of Springfield Township. And as a member of this community, I'm disheartened to know that that's even on the table. So I'd like to better understand that because I didn't fully understand your commentary and I was not at the meeting last week when it initially came up.
Good day, good Saturday. I don't think anyone, maybe with a couple randos or something, want the Little League to go away. No, like, we, you're here tonight, even from the people that want to see change, value the Little League. Um, there, again, we don't have a purview over the internal operations of the league. But it is a partnership that the Little League has priority use of our fields through the use of a land use agreement. So we don't want, um, this to be so bad that this Little League can't function and then another group of people has to start a new Little League chapter fresh. I mean, that just sounds like a lot of work and, and it doesn't really build on what's great about here. But now, if the board comes to us and says, we admit, uh, a bunch of us conspired to fly this plane and too bad, we're going to stay on the board. With that, I mean, that's obviously extreme. I don't expect that it would happen. But if it did happen and you said, let's renew our land use agreement, I think we'd have a real discussion about that. So that's the extent of it. But I don't expect that to ever come to that. There's too many people that care about this Little League and do great work. Uh, but that really, that hopefully answers your question. Suzie, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's, uh, good work, Jim.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, I'm Nicole Solis, seven seventeen Avondale Road. Um, I was not going to speak tonight, um, at all because I think my husband would be very upset with me. But speaking of planes, he's on a plane right now, so he can't see or hear me. So.
Any banners on it?
Not this one. Um, I don't, there are so many things that I want to say. And, um, so many things have been going through my mind. And, um, it's been three weeks since this happened. And this is our community. And I feel like, I feel like our community is at odds with one another. It's like this side versus that side. And that is not the place that I chose to move and raise my family. It's so wrong. It should not be like this. I'm not going to speak on behalf of Greg, but the reason, oh, my, my husband's on the board. Sorry, I meant to say that. My husband's on the board and is very, very, very much against and does not condone what occurred at all. I will let him talk for himself, but I had to say that because what has been going on has been like turmoil in our house. We have not slept in three weeks. And I bet you, probably everyone in this room can probably say the same thing. The problem is, there has been no accountability on anyone's behalf. And we know there are ways to find out who did this. We want accountability. That is all. We love our Little League. We love our kids playing Little League. We love the community that we are bringing our kids to every weekend at those games. The people we talk to, the friends we've met, our kids have met friends there. But here we are, watching two coaches step out of a dugout, laughing and taking pictures of a, of a plane that's bullying another parent, another family. And that's who, those are role models to our kids. My problem with this and the thing that bothers me the most is Jackie, you're my neighbor. Caroline, you're hilarious. And I, I don't want anyone to be upset with each other. I want everybody to be kind and to stand up for what is right. And that's all I think everyone over here is fighting for, is to do what's right. But it's really, really, really hard, I'm not going to lie, to not judge the people that are standing by the person who did this. That is really hard for probably, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but for me, I can't personally look at anybody right now and say, cool, yeah, like, I'm good with you. Because I'm not. I'm not good with anybody who knows who did this and is allowing it to happen. Um, I promise I'll stop talking in a second. I'm sorry. But I'm an educator. I've been for over twenty years. I preach no bullying in my classroom. I preach no bullying to my children. Okay, my son was subjected to bullying quite a few times. And when, I should say, when I taught about bullying in my classroom, I teach about being an upstander. An upstander is someone who stands up to the bully, who doesn't allow it to happen. When my kid got bullied this year, it, on the bus, it took a ten-year-old child to go home and tell their parents that my kid was getting picked on. If a ten-year-old kid can go home and say, Mom, Dad, I know this wasn't right. Please call, please call Max's parents and let them know this is really upsetting me, then why can't adults do it? Okay, that is my problem. We know, we know we can find out who did this. Okay, and just for the record, oh my God, Greg is going to kill me. Just for the record, oh God, he's really going to be mad at me. Don't tell him I did this. Um, I, I have the Little League Child Protection Program that I've been researching for the past three weeks. And section two D, what is it, two D? Two D brings up bullying.
I do got to ask you to wrap it up, just.
I will wrap it up, I promise. Can I just read this real quick? It's really important. Bullying, any type of bullying can have serious effects on players. Anyone who engages in harassment in any form or commits violence or acts of intimidation shall be prohibited from participating in Little League. This applies to, names a bunch of people, adult-to-adult interactions. The following types of behavior are not accepted in the Little League culture and should not be tolerated at the local league. That is what Little League International states on their website. So to answer your question, Zach, sorry to call you out, to answer your question, if and when we find the person who did this, it's right here what will happen. But please do the right thing. We, we are all adults. Be an upstander. When you see something wrong, fix it. You don't have to, we don't have to put anybody on blast. Like, you're wrong, let's own it, let's hold you accountable. This is what happens when we do things wrong. And let's get our community back together again and stop this because this is insane and it's not fair to our kids or ourselves. Sorry.
Do any commissioners have any questions for anyone or comments?
I don't necessarily have a question. I just, um, I might have an invitation for the board. Um, and again, as you mentioned, Jim, earlier, this isn't, um, anything I have not said to some of them already in person. Um, so no surprises here. Um, I think that the idea of, um, being approachable is, um, is a perception, right? It's an experience. So I might say, I'm approachable. But if you don't find me approachable, then that's kind of null and void, right? So it's an invitation, I think, to, um, you know, I might find a person approachable and the next person may not because of something that happened with them. So I just invite the board to maybe reevaluate what that looks like and what that feels like for other people. And then there's been so many really great suggestions already named here and I don't need to rehash them. But the answers are already here. There's amazing volunteers in the room. This is an incredible asset to our community, one that I personally have been able to enjoy. Spent the better part of the decade on those fields and they were amazing, amazing years. So you already have the answers, what to do, but it's about accountability, follow-through, and transparency. And we wouldn't have even been here this evening if those things would have been at the, at the beginning of this. So I invite the board to take the suggestions that your membership has shown up to give here tonight and make the right choices.
Thank you, Beth.
I'll just add, um, I, I was pretty vocal about my uncomfortableness with even having this forum for this type of discussion, just because, um, experiences that I've had where we've, um, made forays into oversight over private organizations have not gone well. Um, I, I think sometimes the lights in this room are too bright for this type of discussion. Um, really, it's a family discussion, the only argument that should be done, maybe not in such a public forum. Uh, I get very uncomfortable when we're publicly, um, chastising individuals, particularly individuals we don't even know who they are. Um, it, it, it just, uh, again, I think a lot of, uh, suggestions were raised by parents who, who want to see change. And I think a lot of the suggestions were good changes. Um, frankly, I think the sooner that we get it away from our purview, the better. Um, I did make some suggestions to the board, um, that, you know, for stuff that we can control. Um, I think moving forward, um, as a, as a township, we should have a policy that addresses, uh, bullying and bias and this type of behavior, um, and have that be incorporated in any sort of program or sport that, that wants to use township facilities. Um, so moving forward, when any organization comes before the township, wants to use a facility, um, you know, that's something we're going to ask. You know, what's your policy towards bias or towards harassment or, you know, and making sure that that's promoted amongst, um, participants? So when they sign up for, for baseball, you know, they'll get that policy. And this is something that we're really championing. That's something we can control. Uh, that is under our purview. Um, and to that effect, you know, if something like promoting, uh, transparency in an organization is important to us, uh, you know, incorporating that into our discussion about, all right, so you want to use our fields? You know, wh- what's your board makeup? What, what, how do you get new people on that board? Um, and again, that is again, I think, something we can control. Uh, I personally get very uncomfortable when we step into, uh, this role where we are trying to put oversight on an organization that really, really have no, uh, purview on other than this agreement that we have in place to use our fields. But I just think that there's too many things we can break. When we break it, we own it. And I'm saying we is the township. Um, and, uh, again, I do think that a lot of good suggestions have been brought tonight. And I think a lot of willingness on the part of a lot of the board members to listen to those suggestions uh, has been fantastic too. I mean, they really did show willingness. Um, at the end of the day, um, you know, we're all adults. So, you know, we can kind of feel hurt and all stuff, but we're adults, we can kind of get by it. I think about, um, you know, two kids that had to look up and see their dad's name on a plane. And that sucks. Uh, and I think we can all agree that, fuck, that, excuse me, that sucks.
Ooh, nice.
And, yeah.
It's internet. We're not subjected to FCC or anything.
Okay. Um, so, uh, yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm slightly hopeful. But again, I just think that this, the, the, the tenor of the conversation that can come out of this type of forum isn't always conducive to coming together. Uh, too often I've seen when, when we've had these type of events, it's brought people further apart and kind of entrenched them in their camps. I really, really hope that doesn't happen. Um, but I also hate the dynamic of, of, you know, you should do blah, blah, blah. Uh, because, as, you know, as everyone else here said, I think everybody knows what we need to do. We just need to do it because we do have great programs in Springfield. This is probably the crown jewel of tech programs we have in this township. Um, and this is just, you know, we, we can speak it better, so.
I'm Brett Brady, eight oh seven Glendale Road. I know a ton of you in this room, friends with a ton of you in this room. The positive that I want to leave tonight is like, I haven't disagreed with a single thing I've heard tonight. I think if we all sat down, we would agree ninety-nine percent of what we're talking about. I don't think there's a pro-bully in this room. I think everybody thinks the plane was ridiculous, stupid, and it needs to be dealt with. I see a clear path forward if people sit down and have a discussion. I don't want to have what you're talking about where it's like, they were sitting over here. I've clapped for everyone tonight. I didn't know there was sides clapping, not sides not clapping. So there is a common ground and I think that's what we need to focus on moving forward. All right, so I just wanted to end with that real fast. Tom, Tom is a great guy, coaches my son. You know, Zach, first round draft pick was your son, not just because he hits bomb to the fence. You know, I, I think there's a lot of common ground here and that's what we should be focusing on.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, all right, we are going to wrap up. I will just say that, um, I mean.
I have one word for you.
Sure.
That's all right. Um, I just, I hate to leave a space without a functional next step or options for, and much like what Beth said, an invitation to you and what you wish to do because to, to, you know, highlight, underscore what John said about, it shouldn't be here. Uh, we shouldn't, uh, put our hands in places where they don't belong, obviously. We don't want to have, and same Jim said it, we don't want to have a hand in your nonprofit and how you run to the extent that we never had to before. I think that's relevant because, you know, this past year, from my view at Parks and Rec, we spent a lot of time laboring minutia at the softball, we're talking, uh, dusk and sunset. Are they different? And if you come over at eight oh six, are you going to take the fields away from the kids? Like, no way, right? Like, that's not going to happen. But we did it because we were being earnest about considering the neighbors. And at that time, really, uh, highlighting all those little finer points. And I'm, I'm probably, unfortunately, maybe for whoever is at the helm in a couple months when the Parks and Rec community comes back to, uh, committee comes back together, we will be talking about this. This is not going to end as far as what the lessons learned for that committee are going to be. Uh, but I do want to also highlight, I, I will only just be to the extent that, uh, this shouldn't be the safe, or this shouldn't be the space. Sometimes a space like this is necessary only when there was no other Adam, right? There was no reason to, you know, every time you're looking at me, I'm like, no, 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 don't come here. Like, that's smart as well, don't come this way. Not because it's not available, it's always available. And I want that to be highlighted and underscored. The space will always be available. Should it come this way, you know, I think it could have, uh, you break, you break. I think it could have, either the break, you break it, you own it type of consequences. I worry about that, of course. But also, it should never be a place that people are afraid of. And where there is fear, I think we, as government officials, can provide safe space to bring things to light, to highlight them, and that's one role we can play. Another role we can play, and this is the next step aspect of it, is education. A lot of this, and, and this goes to the transparency aspect, a lot of this sounds like it surrounds, and I'm frankly, you've heard me say it. I've said it all to everyone who has ever spoken to me. I know many of you are in this room about this topic. It's not, not to say I don't care about those little details. They do matter. I'm not here for who said what and where and all those things. I'm hearing the Discord and seeing, like, let's, let's figure that out. Although, I do agree that if we figure, you know, some facts out, it could help. But let's figure out the education to take those next steps, so that could be potentially providing a forum where people feel comfortable, because clearly there is a discomfort, you know, if you don't want to consider it intimidation, at least base level, within a degree, there's discomfort for many people here. A, a space to learn about how, what you're doing, how it works, so on and so forth. At Parks and Rec, and I know at least one committee member is here, we have talked about doing that at the outset for the benefit of neighbors. And we had never considered doing that for the benefits of those who volunteer or choose to share their time and/or those members. And, you know, I've heard of over 600, 800, 900 families who participate in this, who are constituents and beyond, who could benefit from just understanding all of those things, and we can all benefit. You're gonna find more volunteers, because now everybody knows how it works, so on and so forth. Those are the tools that I think we, as government officials, can provide. And we will continue to provide at Parks and Rec Committee, and personally, I feel here, we can continue to provide that here if things don't resolve. You know, it's not just a place to air grievances. We want to help every gut body move on their way, and that's what I want to provide here in this space.
Great. Well, given we never really had a, a line sort of chomping at the bit at the mic, I don't know that we need to replay this Wednesday or, or something like that. So, I, I'm glad that, that people were heard. I just hope the board takes away to, the board of the Little League, rather specifically, takes away two things. One, I hope you heard that, and I know some of you are here, some are not. I hear you've heard that you're valued. You know, no matter what, people will really appreciate how much you do. And also, that you hear that they want accountability on this. And this is, that's your responsibility to fix. So, if the board doesn't act appropriately, then the board has the issue. And we can help with that, or we can, you know, step back. But I know when it gets to the matter of, of a public major concern and public displays of bullying, that is within our purview. But we just hope we can just sort of step back from that, and, you know, with John and, and the changes that they want, they'll get there. So, with that, we do have our interview, so thank you very much for coming out. You can always reach out to any of us if you'd like to share more. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone, to the monthly workshop meeting of the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners. Do we have anyone online?
Just me.
Alright. Okay. A is done. Alright, we're doing good. B, parking, that seems pretty obvious. Do you have anything about that? Lorraine Avenue, oh wait.
It's, yeah, Lorraine. Yeah, 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 okay.
The 100 block of Lorraine.
Alright, so that's good there. Middle school, we already covered. D, Hoss Lane, we already covered?
Yep.
Who comes into D? E?
Amusement.
Amusement devices. 500 feet, sounds great.
Yeah, a couple of other changes. The, the updated ordinance is in your packet. One thing I could appreciate some direction on is the license fee that we charge.
The 100 bucks?
We, we have been charging 100 bucks per machine since 1982.
Right.
Do you want to update that fee? There was some discussion to update it. Seems like nobody else has ever updated it.
How many of these do we collect?
Not many. I mean, there was a time when, like, every bar had two or three of these things. They were limited to four, and if you wanted to have more than four, it was, what did they, we called it? Basically, it was an arcade, but it was
Right.
amusement center or something like that. But none ever existed, you know?
So, it's been 100 since 1982?
Yeah.
I vote for 125.
Not worth doing it.
No.
Okay, there you go.
100 bucks.
Anybody care? Okay.
That's fine.
Alright, is that the only question you have on that?
That was it.
Alright, we're up to the township. Look, we're halfway done.
Can I start advertising that for July?
I have no objection with that.
Like, you're good with the ways. Andy made the changes.
I'm surprised P T March up for 325. He's always going for the money.
Not worth the amendment, right?
Alright.
Yeah.
Managers report, you want to go through that quick?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Alright, Andy's here. Walnut Pedestrian Trail, heard from Tim, what's going on there? Actually, they're gonna do landscaping tomorrow, or at least start offloading them. Road projects, there's construction all around us. The big story is Pennsylvania Avenue is being milled and repaved, and Bethlehem Pike Milling started. There's a typo in here, it's not eight weeks in between milling and paving. Thank God, it's eight days.
And I was surprised too that they, they're, they're, they're down to the one lane still.
Yeah. They put the temporary markings.
It was a little bit confusing. I was on it today.
Yeah, there's no signage, just sort of happened suddenly. So, if you're used to it being two lanes, you, you gotta.
Yeah.
And the right lane is particularly wide. I'm coming from my.
But the signage is, yeah, it was. And then people were speeding, like they're jockeying, they, you know, cutting each other off.
Yeah, it wasn't great.
Yeah.
It felt like the one side, our side, the other side, seemed wider than that other side, and that was the confusion to me. So, just to check that.
Yeah.
They're not gonna redo it.
I don't remember redoing. I mean, it's, it's still all cut up, you know, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's gonna be a mess for, during the temporary.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, even if it was a big sign, like, you know, one lane ahead, you know, moving forward, just so people know.
It was wild how that, you could have that parking in front of, if you're approaching the fair lane, and you're in two lanes, but all of a sudden, there's just now a car parked there, and you're like, ah.
But particularly right, right by the giant, right before you get the giant sign, right? This side, this side is wider than yours. It's just, just the. And so, in your mind, you're like, it must be wider temporarily to accommodate two vehicles.
Alright, I'll keep, contractor can do something with that. Alright, Ridge Pike, that's moving along. They actually are targeting November 24th for completion of that. And we only have a short section, but if you live out there, it's a real mess.
Yep.
Chatham Avenue, we got new notice from Montgomery County that the CCDI grant was approved by DDRPC. They're waiting on a grant agreement, meeting for next steps. You know, it's federal money, so it's gonna take a little bit of time, but that, good news, it was approved. Rec Center Master Plan, as recently as today, they agreed to all the draconian provisions that Andy implemented in that.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm always so, is this an unusual holdup?
Nah, they were busy. We, we got back to them with some comments. They were busy. They went away to a conference. This guy who's doing it, he just recently got back from somewhere else, so.
It was just, it was timing issues. Yeah.
Be sure there wasn't anything.
They were hung up on lump sum, and we were like, well, it's not a lump sum. We finally agreed to fixed fee. But, yeah. It worked out. Recycling report, good news on the recycling report. The audit that we had done last year resulted in a, a new mix of commodities percentages. And fortunately, the, the higher value stuff seems to make up more of our recycling mix. And the lower commodity, or lower-priced stuff went down, it decreased. So, we're only paying 92 cents net this month. This is good.
Don't worry.
A glass is a dog.
The dog.
Every two years, we have an audit pursuant to the agreement.
And we're always number one.
We are always number one. In terms of the.
Good garbage.
Yeah. We, we have the.
Good recycling garbage.
We're the cleanest trash out there.
We do, we do.
Carson Valley, a big story there, is I got notice from the school district that they are gonna be unable to wind down their operations by the end of this school year, as originally planned. They're gonna be doing summer programs and possibly fall programs. No explanation given. I did not hear back from the contact that I was put in touch with for Carson, which is the land trust. I imagine, I mean, he's an older gentleman, I imagine he travels. But I, I'm gonna try and find out a little bit more information the next couple of days, because that came down late last week from the school district, so. We'll see what goes on there.
But like, PHMC is, they're just continuing their services, right?
That's the plan, but they, they aren't be, aren't able to wind it down as quickly as they thought they were going to. So, they're still gonna have a presence.
Do they still have it?
For the fall.
In the fall? And so, potentially.
But it says that the school anticipates serving through the summer, but Carson Valley, in terms of the PHMC, is not planning to continue here. So, it's just, so kids are.
Yeah, beyond that.
PHMC doesn't, isn't offering services. I was just curious about the summer.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that can sometimes be problematic, that there's residential offered and there's no programming.
Yep.
That.
That's exactly what a school.
That's what the school's concern is. That's what the school's concern is. So, we gotta find some more information out there, but what's going on?
Did you, one of those lines, I don't know if you saw the, it was an article in the Inquirer about this fight in Horsham that's been going on for like seven years? It's 10 acres, and it sparked my interest because it talked about Orphans Court.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It was donated years and years and years ago.
To the school district.
School district. And the school district now went to sell it to a developer. And the neighbors and everyone said, well, it was intended to be used as educational purposes.
Right.
So, they've been fighting it for seven years in court. They originally wanted Orphans Court, the people that were contesting it, but then they, it got.
It got appealed.
Got appealed, and they lost, and they're pretty close to probably losing it.
Yeah, school districts don't end up.
Selling it.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's that property right up by Horsham Road and, and Limehill Pike.
Yeah.
Where the Asplund trucks are always parked.
Didn't happen to say, and I don't, I remember the school court, but you recall what the Orphans Court directing was?
There's a procedure in the school code about township, school district-owned property and how to dispose of it. And oftentimes, you have to go to Orphans Court to deal with that issue. So, I think that's why it's there.
Not because of a relationship to the trust.
Correct, correct. I think it's district-owned property. They don't want to use it for
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't just because it was school. I think it had to do with how it was originally conveyed to the school district.
Right, right.
So, I think there was an element to that.
Yeah.
That, that was the Dr. Cleaners of the world trying to find some way to keep it from being sold for development.
Right.
I mean, forgetting for the fact that it's developed already as a school, it's in a dilapidated state.
Right.
But, yeah, they don't have that festival, so. We talked a little bit about the East Mill Road pedestrian trail. I don't know if you guys want to take that up?
We talked about that, right? That's the one with
Yeah.
Your constituent, John?
Yep.
What did we say? We, we said that we were gonna look into just
Oh, yes.
Sanity check on the, on the priority list, and then we'll talk Wednesday and give.
I would say that is that we all, just having gone through the, the trail plan, should probably have a good sense of opportunities within our wards. And if there are priority ones, and what I would just say is that, again, if there's a priority or if there's an opportunity to move forward with the trail somewhere else, let's hear, bring it up. Let's, let's move forward with it. This is hot trot, and that's why I want to
Good.
advocate for moving it.
I, I am, I am supportive of the trails. This is Ed. And if we, if we, if we have an opportunity to get something done, I agree we could, we should, provided that the, the, the cost isn't, you know, something that's so outside of the ordinary. But I agree that if, if.
You know, I, I know that it's, it's expensive because it is along this water, right? I think frankly, that's, you know, to, to have a, a trail along a creek as part of our system is nice.
Yes.
And, and to pay a little extra for, for that, you know, it's a nice, rather than having them all sort of monotonous. And to another one of your questions, Susie, about this particular area, again, because we, the township owns an adjacent property on the other side, on the Carlin Way side, we own that property that the trail connects to. It's another little added bonus of being able to gain even a little bit more distance. And it's probably the thinnest spot because the, the, the Carlin Way dead ends there, and then mills here. It's the thinnest spot amidst the, kind of connecting those two areas. So, again, I think we get the most bang for the buck as far as utilizing the trails along the streets. This little connector piece is the trail. And then and then they get the more trails through the neighborhood across street, which would then connect us, you know, to the, to the country club.
Yep.
Which ideally would take us around and then to go to your neighborhood. So, it is, I, I think it is a nice little keystone.
I think it, just, just to be clear, I just want to be sure that you talked about it before about what it's like, or priority, or something like that.
Right.
I don't think it would hurt, it would behoove us actually to just have a list. This is how much it would cost. Here's top 10. This could, could very well be number one. I just think it'd be smart on our part to have that ready to go.
It's good protocol.
Experience for everyone. And frankly, as we say, hey, got an extra 50K in the kitty, we spent 50K for a buck, you know, I, I don't know. And I just, I mean, sat on that trail, the money plant, seen all those trails, I haven't watched every single one, you know, or whatever, but I just think it's probably a good protocol. Be sure we have it on eyes around that, because, you know, sometimes it's one thing, you're talking about basically 50 starter plus another 150 on top. You know, it starts to be a lot of money. It's one thing if it's like even under 100, you might forget how much even Sandy, or Sandy the one on the country club is well done. Exactly, off the top of my head, but, you know. That visibly looks like a lot as opposed to more than 500 feet stretched somewhere here. I just want to be sure it's all out there, so we can fairly adjudicate that, frankly, for, for the public, but I'm betting that's mine, but we just don't have that process.
Just a quick, very question, or information that Tim said about the material, it would be used, it takes a long, long way. He said that that would be.
Like wood chip instead of just.
It has to be, it has to be a hard surface.
Yeah. Well, so if you're gonna get any kind of grant funding for it, you're gonna need to make it ADA accessible. And so, it's gonna have to be a paved surface anyway. But again, you know, when you're in that floodway area, you need to have a paved surface, otherwise it's gonna wash right out. But then that brings in the permitting obligation. So, it's like, it's.
It's a big, it's a big snowball.
And is there easement costs that is already?
No, they're willing to give us the easement. That's where like the, I don't wanna say the urgency is, but the opportunity is.
They're saying $0.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyway, $0. Oh, they don't want it down.
Right. Our thought was get the easement, and then we're gonna trim some limbs and, you know, kind of formalize it that way, but so. Figure out the speech, yeah. Historical.
So, so, real quick, so, what next steps then, or what?
Susie offered to look at the trail plan and just do a sanity check of priorities and where this fits. And then come back Wednesday, and we don't have to have a formal vote, right? Just at this point.
Well, we could ask the planning permission to.
I mean, I feel like, I feel like just Susie doing it doesn't feel right for the. Because I feel like he might have a better idea of like which ones cost dollars. I could look at it, but these all sound great, but like, I have no context for how much things.
Suffice it to say, every trail that you're gonna build is gonna be costly because of permitting obligations, because of construction costs nowadays, design, engineering, all that stuff.
But like, are we talking, you know, possibility of 50K project or?
There's no 50K projects.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. So, they're all the, this range. That's what I don't really have the context of. I don't think anyone, even on the trail thing, would really have context for that.
Right.
Understanding that. So, and then, to be fair, I think they probably write it off or the, or some other committees to have a thought on. Not that we want to belabor this, to your point, and there's a little bit of like.
Yeah.
You got John here ready to give it to us.
I think where you're gonna run into challenges are, let's look at the trail behind Penn Oak Road as an example, right?
What, the abandoned railroad?
Yeah, that exists as a trail today, but you're gonna hear likely so much opposition from people who live adjacent to it, that it'll never get going.
And you have a legal claim to the land.
On May and half of it. So, you know, like, that may be the priority in, in the list, but you have to be prepared for that to just sit there as the priority and jump that are actually practical, meaning one like this, where you've got a willing landowner.
I just don't think we have that rubric out of the trail plan as much as we're trying to get there. And two, I think one trail committee member, Melissa Brooks, had at some point. One trail committee member, Melissa Brooks had at some point said, what will we do next? And. I don't want to committee this because it'll take too long, but it just. It's a fair point, I believe, we can.
Why don't we have Tim take a look at it, come up with some ideas?
Spots, have a list that we can say approximately X dollars, challenges include. Cranky neighbors, you know, versus no challenges, ready to roll, you know, and whatever.
We could also get the county to look at it, a county planner.
It's just worth pulling.
Yeah, they have a, they have a trail planner, they have a professional trail planner, okay?
Well, and they helped us with the plan.
Right, exactly. And I just don't think we officially in that in that document.
Yeah, he may, he or she may even have a. A priority already. We're unaware.
Maybe, I mean, this may.
All right. Well, I'll follow.
Out again, that's again.
Okay, uh, historical commission, they would like to get involved in the review of subdivision and land development applications. Um, there's a proposed. Um, I'll, I'm gonna say addition to the.
Only if there's a building that they believe meets the criteria.
That's not how this reads though.
Well. Yes, it does.
I thought he included.
Yeah, okay, so the the historic resource is one that's constructed prior to nineteen thirty.
Right, right, right. So that's what they're saying. You're basically saying.
Yeah.
We're not getting a whole lot of cooperation.
Your materials.
Yeah, a whole lot of cooperation. Individual uh uh property owners here, but we still want to, at the very least. If somebody comes in for a subdivision, big subdivision. Uh, and there is a. A qualifying, what we believe to be a qualifying building on that, on that piece of ground. Then then we should have a. The ability to have a report. Produced. That may just be for posterity or 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 may uh entice the landowner to uh. Uh. Take advantage of the. Uh additional. The easement, uh historic easement that can be placed on the property, so. That's, that's the pitch. Basically. That makes sense to me.
Well, it, I mean, you you've got a comprehensive rewrite of your sound ordinance that. Yeah, pass it along to the planners if they think it's swell, like, so yeah, they'll include it. Then you guys can make a decision when you look at the whole thing.
Sounds good. Did they give up on that twenty five thousand dollar they wanted?
Don't remind, I don't know. They haven't come back. They were gonna develop an RFP.
Yeah.
For that, you know. Instead of the right.
We haven't spoke, we we have been having intermittent meetings, so that's the problem.
Good.
Hasn't been focused on yet.
Alright.
Again.
Uh, Flower Town Country Club cell tower, Verizon is gonna replace Sprint as they both do last.
And it's no increase in height.
No increase in height, they're just swapping out the antennas.
And no reason to rent. Right?
Only the regular.
Regular annuals, yeah.
Uh, Old Drive. Uh, we had a meeting on May twenty first. It was attended by what, like eight different households?
Yeah.
Eight attendants. Um, oh, Tim did a great job, put together a a nice presentation, kinda told everybody how we got to where we are today. Um, very limited opportunities for us to make wholesale changes to improve things for them. Um, we talked about little incremental things that they can all do as neighbors, try and help one another. Um, and there's one. Public infrastructure. Project that we might tackle, um, sits in the rear yard of a property on Elliston Drive. It's a modified manhole. Um, that, you know, was, the lid was replaced to have uh grates in it so that it would take on some stormwater. Although it sits high right now. Um, so we think we can lower it and maybe get it to take on some water. Um, in that vicinity. Ian finally made contact with the people today. They responded, they said, got your letter, what do you need? And so he made contact with them and they're gonna try and get together to. Um, move forward with that, so. Uh, the institutes, we met on May fifteenth. Um, with the folks up there to understand their, um, I guess. Desire to create this catering business up there.
Well, they did achieve something amazing. A little bit of a time travel. I mean, it felt like this fifties during the. They had some. Yeah.
Particularly the.
But tons of character, I mean, very cool.
That main building was pretty cool.
Yeah.
Those other two buildings are creepy, I think.
Well, the, what about the auditorium with the, that's pretty cool.
That is like circa nineteen fifty, with absolutely no updates since, but. Um, anyway. Uh, there's a whole bunch of propaganda here that we got, if you're interested in, because you couldn't make the meeting or you weren't invited to the meeting, you. Could take that home and. Add to our recycling papers up.
We haven't heard back since then in terms of their.
But it it that is institutionally zone, right?
Yes, it is.
And and would a catering operation? Be allowed in the?
No.
It's not.
It's a use variance.
Even if we got approved, the the level of improvements that they would need to make to get it just up the code is retail. Use, I mean. I mean, it's tons of character, but everything's just so outdated and overgrown and.
And it was, yeah, but they're doing it now, right?
Uh, they've had a couple of events. I don't think it's a thriving business.
Yeah.
They have a good website.
They had, I think they've kind of taken it down, haven't they?
I haven't, I haven't looked recently.
Events thing, I think they took it down.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Recently, within the last week or two?
No, I think it was down before that.
I'm checking recently.
Not that long ago.
Can you sign up for a?
I looked for it.
I think it's a challenging space, like you talked about.
For forget when we're executive and that.
It's right for, it's right for a.
They need to get.
Institutional.
It it probably could be a cool like wedding venue with places for like guests to stay like.
For not that big of a, an event, like not a two hour.
Yeah, like it could be like a Peddler's Village type, like, you know, one of the. Flower and Harthing or whatever that's there, or Smithville or something.
The Pocken Bowl.
Uh, yeah, that thing.
I sent, I think one of the neighbors could inform me, though, actually, uh, they they actually are hoteliers or some, some other locations. Cause I had asked the neighbors, like, is there any concern or any issue with this one to turn into, whatever that is? If they were even to able finding such a thing. He said, oh, no.
I'm done.
You don't want to talk about baseball?
Uh.
Alright, good. Alright, any questions on the bill listing?
You'll kill me if I say anything bad.
Okay. No questions there, okay, we, by red, we have arrangements for Liam Baskin.
I have a question on the Aqua Bill for the uh. Well, one of these, well, you know.
Aqua Velva, remind Aqua Velva?
We still have a high Aqua Bill, we still have an award issue there.
That's their bill a month at arrears.
But this is the third big bill we've had.
Yeah, because we didn't know that it was running for the first month. We thought we got it when we fixed the faucet in the rec center. Uh, rec day.
Yes.
But in reality, it ran for another whole month in the rectory before we finally caught it and it bounced shut off.
Big shit.
Good job, mine.
Alright, next one, H, uh, we have. Uh, Boy Scout coming to uh present on Wednesday. That's great.
Yep.
Uh, zoning, anything we need? We talked about Mermaid. Uh, Rose Lane, do we have to talk about anything?
No, it's, the sign is not outrageous. It's a twenty five square foot ground sign, which would normally be permitted in a. Commercial district, but this is residentially known, so it's. Larger than would be permitted, um, and they did it without a permit, but.
This is those little apartment buildings right there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good.
They spread a lot of money on apartments, too.
Alright, any questions on the recycling report? Nope, okay, uh, Renewable Springfield, alright, Joy was a.
Dissuaded.
Was a very nice lady who has agreed to come back Wednesday. And um, present for us, so we'll handle that Wednesday. Any questions on that? Great. And. Did she want to talk about the solar as well?
Uh, I'm sure she would have been here to discuss or talk about it. Um, Ron couldn't be here to present it himself because his wife had a medical procedure today.
Okay.
Uh, but he's willing to come in and um, share it with you. He also would like the opportunity to go. Reexamine the public works building for purpose of putting in the inverters. He originally had planned to hang them on the outside of the building. I said, the architects will kill me if I allow you to hang them on the outside of that building and. People can see him. We gotta find a place where we can hide him, either on the roof or inside, like it's a garage bay. We've gotta be able to find a place. We just have to be cognizant of any code issues. Uh, so he's gonna bring his buddy that's the inverter, I guess. Guru and let him know, so.
Okay.
We have that set up for Friday, I think.
So is there anything we need to decide or do? Now, we're gonna wait on that.
You can wait if you want. The only thing um, that we we could. Get started on, and I don't know that there's any urgency, is um, that proposal we got for the structural group analysis.
Mm hmm.
Um, it's eighteen hundred and seventy dollars to get that guy to go go on it, but. You might want to just listen, hear from Ron first. Um, it's a million dollar project. You don't want to jump in out of nowhere.
Okay. I'm good with that. So would Ron come back next month?
He could, I think he could.
After he gets a little bit more of that homework done? I'm good with that, okay. Very good. Alright, M for hmm. Okay. This is where I stop reading.
Um, where are we, M?
M.
EAC.
Oh, the EAC, uh, you've talked about this already. You have three members that are up for reappointment, one of which. Um, you talked about in the past, uh, that. The thought was, um, you're gonna accept the recommendation of.
Yeah, we already decided that.
Yeah.
So we don't have to revisit that.
So you have two that you'd reappoint if you want to confirm.
Okay.
Brendan, they're interested in serving. I think they both would.
Yeah.
Uh, and then that's gonna create a vacancy. And you might want to decide whether you want to elevate one of your. Newly appointed. Associates or kind of let it ride for a little bit.
She aware that she's not being reappointed?
He's not aware. So, should I be having that conversation?
I think so. Most shows, you have different suggestion of communicating that than other than Brendan as the liaison.
Uh. Just. Send a letter thanking her for her service.
Yeah, term is expired.
Term is expired.
Brendan, it's up to you. If you, if you want to deliver it, um.
Thank you for your.
Verbally or?
Yeah, I'm fine delivering. I, you know, I just didn't know whether there was any historical uh, protocol for it.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we send?
Will she be invited to the Christmas party?
Tell her verbally.
Is she invited to the holiday party?
Uh, probably wouldn't get that invitation.
Learn of that too.
Really put him on the spot, John.
Thanks for your service and apologize.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta buy your own, your own dinner.
Alright, so why don't we, uh, well, they will send a letter. By we, I mean, right?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, but Brendan will verbally uh, confirm before that. Unless you change your mind.
Uh, so what? You know?
So to you, pal.
I'd email it.
I think an email is reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then uh.
I would visit, I would do it directly.
And then as far as the other individuals, like, are we gonna try and sort that out to elevate somebody by Wednesday or? We can let it hang for a month.
When's your next EAC?
Next Wednesday of the month, right?
Yeah.
I'm waiting to talk about her.
Yeah, why don't you check with the ex, with the committee and see how they want to handle it? Cause we're gonna listen to their recommendation. As of now, we don't have that.
Okay.
But we do want to confirm that the other two would like to be renewed.
Yeah, they definitely do. I mean, I understand. President of the EAC, I say, and then get off this. Would you, just kind of putting this out there, would you want to maybe make contact with, is Alan still the the chair or is it? Yeah, he's the chair. Um. Make contact with him and say, hey, look, you know. Appointments are ready, we're prepared to reappoint you and Gail. Um, there'll be a vacancy if we don't appoint. Veda, um, do you folks have? A recommendation? For any of the existing associates?
You're saying to do that before Wednesday?
I I might, that way you kind of like seamlessly boom, do it, and that way there's no room for somebody saying, well. You didn't reappoint this individual and now you got a vacancy. What are your plans there? Well, you don't know.
Okay.
Or, or you can let the committee discuss it.
Well, that's what we just said and then.
I'll, I'll, I'll email Aaron like first thing tomorrow morning.
I mean, they, they, they don't have to wait for a meeting, decide that, right?
They don't have to.
Okay. So you guys can, you guys, it's a good group, they could just answer, I mean.
What's that?
It it sounds like they don't have to wait to meet their official meeting, they can just confer and.
I mean, if they, it, I mean, maybe pose it in the form of, have you thought about?
Well, they probably have already thought about it. They knew this was coming.
They're. Good thinkers, so I imagine that.
They're ahead of us.
One step ahead of us or all steps of them. Yeah. Uh. And if they haven't, then then play by your at the meeting. I'm just trying to avoid the uncomfortable situation where she shows up. To your next meeting.
He's expecting to be here.
This is a public meeting.
Right.
Well, I bet she continues to show up even when she's not.
Alright, so. I agree with Mike's suggestion. Get that wrapped up.
Thank you. If she's not on the board, then she has less of a chance to hijack the meetings in the fashion that she does.
As a matter of protocol, not really just for the situation, should it ever happen again, maybe just. If the emails instead of phone calls, so thank you, you know, some sort of form thing as opposed to.
Yeah, remove the uh. Ambiguity and habit in writing.
I'm just saying, rather than forcing Brendan to make a decision.
Okay, I'm cool with this.
You know what I'm saying? Just to be.
Alright.
I'm writing the letter, right?
Yeah.
It's just CCU, and then that was not, if Brendan has to.
It's a mailer or can you email it?
Uh, I do have to email it, thank you. I know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna have Chuck Bailey deliver it. I'm gonna have Chuck Bailey.
You can call Brandon then. He'll, he'll love to.
Oh, he would, he would.
So we're gonna have Joy do her presentation on on Wednesday, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, you want to, you folks want to do that right after Liam?
Sure.
I don't imagine Liam's presentation will be all that long.